All the roll.
Okay, Ms. Born.
Here.
Mr. Coolman.
Here.
Ms. Maturney.
Here.
Mr. Matusak.
Here.
Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Thank you. Please join me in saying the prayers of allegiance. Please stand if you are able.
The prayers of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our
The minutes of the council meeting for December 1st, 2020.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have the minutes, and I believe everyone has received a copy of these. Hearing no questions on the minutes, I would like to make the motion to approve the minutes of the city council meeting held on December 1st, 2020, as written, and to dispense with their readings.
Second. Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Maturney.
Yes.
Mr. Matusak.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have no special reports, letters, communications, citizen concerns. Seeing none, administrative reports. First, I just quickly want to say, John Echols is retiring at the end of the year, and we want to give him a particular acknowledgement and recognition for all his hard work and service to the community. We have some more formal things going on, but John cannot be here tonight, but I did want to make sure that he got special recognition today. I also want to, on behalf of, I'm sure, myself, Perrysburg City Council and the entire community, want to wish our condolences, thoughts and prayers to the family of Nicholas Leonidas, the Bowling Green City Council member who was tragically killed in an automobile accident last week. He's a real asset to the community and a very nice person who did a lot for Bowling Green and for Olive Wood County. So we want to wish his family the best and show our support for them during this difficult time. I have no other reports, other than I have two recommendations to city committees: Becky Williams to the Planning Commission and Susan Roland Miller to the Street Tree Commission, that for the council, when it gets to the president of council, report. Administrator, do we have...
No report.
Finance Director?
No report tonight.
Director of Law?
No report.
Thank you very much. And administration reports. President of Council?
Thank you, Mayor, for the, for my report here today. I know you just mentioned the appointments of Becky Williams and Susan Roland Miller to the Planning Commission and Street Tree Commission. I would like to make a motion to approve those appointments as the Appointment Review Committee has met and recommended 3-0.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
All righty, Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Maturney.
Yes.
Mr. Matusak.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Thank you.
And one other thing I'd like to do is recognize our fire department staff. There was a fire over in Aspen Drive last week, and the individual who owns that home works with my wife, and she had nothing but great things to say about the staff throughout that horrible deal that her family went through. She said the staff is very professional and did a wonderful job. So I just would like to thank our fire department staff for how well that they handled such an awful situation for our residents. That would be the end of my report.
Jonathan, did we want to talk about that interview night for the new council position? It occurred to me that...
I appreciate you reminding me of that. I completely forgot about that. I know Mr. McCarthy had reached out that he had some concerns with the meeting night of January 20th, as that would be the date unscheduled for the presidential inauguration. I'm not sure what time the inauguration would take place. I don't know if that's something that will be a hindrance. Is there any conversation that the council would like to take on possibly changing that date?
Oh, thanks.
And I'll leave the floor open to anybody with any suggestions on that.
And do you guys want to do it virtually?
I think that we would still probably try to do those in person, depending on what we...
Your guys' call. That's fine.
Yeah, I'd prefer to move to a different date. The inauguration will be at noon, I think. I think by law or custom, that's when it is, but there will be a lot happening that day, and I think if we can find another day, I'd recommend that.
Pulling up my calendars right now. Is there any thoughts on any dates that could potentially work? I know we have, looking at Mary Jo, who seems to know the schedule.
She's the master of dates.
So we said...
Are we still looking at that week, whether that'd be Monday or...
Monday.
The 21st, the Thursday?
And I know that that would be a difficult date to do. What did, let's see here. I have to look at a couple of different schedules myself. I may be able to make that work, but I would ask that if we could start it a little earlier.
I honestly have no issue with any date, but I, do you, do we really think the presidential inauguration is going to affect the ability of anybody to be here?
Yeah, I think people would be interested, who worked during the day and watching that night, what has happened and what the developments were. They may want to watch the new inaugural address or whatever, but...
I mean, if we move to the 21st, I don't have an issue. I would just ask if we do it at 5:30. I mean, I don't necessarily disagree with the Councilman Coolman. I'm not sure how much it would be an impact for us here in Perrysburg, but I do understand and want to respect those who would like to watch that and be, potentially partake in that event.
I would be available at 5:30 on the 21st, if that's what you're asking for.
Yes.
That's good for me.
Can we possibly do the week of January 27?
It would be, we have 45 days to make that appointment.
What about on Monday or Tuesday of that week, on the 27th through the 28th?
Well, I know I can't do the 28th.
Is there a reason we don't want to do it the 19th? I know we have a council meeting, but...
The, that'll take quite a bit of time. If we did it on the 19th, it'd just depend on how many people we have that submit to it.
19th is a Sunday.
I'd rather kill one night than two, to be honest with you.
I'm in agreement with President Smith. I think we should have a different night, because it will take some time to listen to what they have to say.
I agree. I think the last one took about two hours, if I remember correctly, and I understand. I'm concerned, Mr. Coolman.
Does the 21st not work? Is that what we're thinking?
That's fine with me.
I think, I think maybe Deborah had a problem with it.
Is there, Councilman Born, is there an issue with the 21st if we push that to 5:30 on the 21st, or?
Well, it's not the best, it's not the great of a day for me. I've got a lot going on that day.
All right.
Is there any other date that week?
25th, 26th, 27th, 28th.
We could push it back to the 25th, but we have to be conscious that we have a short window. I know the mayor wouldn't mind if we went outside that window, but not want to put words in his mouth, but...
Whatever you guys want to do.
President Smith, isn't the 25th a Saturday?
The 25th is a Monday. Monday.
It's a Monday.
25th would work for me.
I think the 25th would be good.
Still do it earlier, though?
We could start it earlier if we, we could start at 5:30 on the 25th.
Are we talking about the same day as the council meeting on the 25th?
No.
Because council meetings, the first and the third.
Yeah, the council meeting would be on the 19th and the 5th.
Okay, and then, I'm going to look to Barry. When is our safety committee meeting?
The 26th.
Okay.
Tuesday.
Okay. Do we have any conflicts on the 25th?
No. Here's the cities. The underlying dates are, we have stuff going on.
Okay.
So why don't we tentatively change the date to January 25th at 5:30 p.m. here in the council chambers for that deployment process, and hopefully we can get that communicated to the public of the new date and time. And out of curiosity, how many individuals have put in so far for it? We don't need names, just out of curiosity.
The last I knew at the end of last week, almost over six.
Okay.
And I just emailed our PIO to see if you could meet up with what council is doing.
All right, thank you. Is there anything else to bring up at this point? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, committee reports. Finance and Economic Development Committee?
Thank you, Mayor Mackin. We did meet since last council meeting. We met on December 8th, and it's 5:30. Present were Ms. Born, myself, and Mr. McCarthy. Also present were Ms. Sandretto, Mr. Krebs, Ms. Rathbun, Mr. Bronder and Mr. Ronder. First thing we looked at was health insurance. You're going to see some legislation here tonight. The city has gone out for that on health insurance for the employees, and there's actually been a recommendation that we switch, who we're currently with, and the committee, you'll see my report, you can read the details, but the committee did agree 3 to 0 to forward that to city council and to approve it, hopefully. Next up was the CARES Act. Ms. Sandretto presented that, and we've been offered yet more money under the CARES Act, about $109,000, $110,000. The committee agreed 3 to 0 to recommend that we move that forward to council for approval. We have some legislation for that tonight. The Finance Director's Report, we looked at our expenditures over $5,000, addressed any questions we had there. We looked at the balance of the Health and Welfare Fund. What we were given shows about $100,000 from Mr. Krebs to tell us that due to timing, there could have been another $50,000 worth of claims that could have been posted to that. So it's really, it's a practical matter of about $50,000, which is where we thought it was going to be. So there are no surprises anyway. And that, too, is kind of addressed in conjunction with the new health insurance. We also have the three pieces of legislation that we have every year, this last meeting of the year, that addresses the budget to make any year-end adjustments that need to be made based on year-to-date actual numbers versus what we've had in the budget all year long. There are no surprises there. Tax Commissioner's Report, Mr. Bronder reported on the income tax collections year-to-date, and he's hoping to finish the year at 19.5 to 20 million, which is a little bit behind last year, because last year we had $21 million in collections. So a possible 1 to $1.5 million shortfall there. I think we talked briefly about the spending this year, too, and the administration has curbed the spending substantially, so that the $1.5 million did not pose a problem. And then other business, I briefly questioned, I didn't really question, but I felt compelled to at least bring up the subject regarding the internal control structure for the city of Perrysburg due to what took place over in Lucas County recently, and Bridget addressed that and assures us that we're in good hands, which was, no surprises there either. So, that's what took place at the meeting, and I do have, how many pieces do I have tonight? One, two, three, four, five. I got five pieces of legislation. At a minimum, I would ask that ordinance is 34, 35, and 36. I'd be able to present those together, because they're all kind of tied to one another. 33 is the health insurance, if you'd like to do that separately, and 32 is the amendment for the CARES Act money. Does anybody have any reason to not do them all together?
Good for me.
Hearing none, I'm going to introduce everything together, then, because I believe everything is an emergency. Yep. Okay. So then, I would like to introduce ordinances 32, 2020, 33, 2020, 34, 2020, 35, 2020, and 36, 2020, and move that the rules be suspended to allow for their reading by number and title only and to dispense with the second and the third readings.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes, I'm sorry, roll call. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Maturney.
Yes.
Mr. Matusak.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number 32, 2020, amending ordinance number 3, 2020, to amend appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the year beginning January 1, 2020 and ending December 31, 2020, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 33, 2020, authorizing city health insurance coverage and administration agreements through United Healthcare Benefits Administrators and related entities, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 34, 2020, amending the city budget ordinance to revise the estimated revenues for the year ending December 31, 2020, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 35, 2020, amending the city budget ordinance by authorizing certain additions to appropriations for the year ending December 31, 2020, and declaring an emergency. And ordinance number 36, 2020, authorizing certain cash transfers within the city's budgets and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. I moved that ordinance as 32, 33, 34, 35, and 36, 2020, all be passed as emergency measures.
Second.
Discussion.
I do have one quick question here on the health insurance. I know that we set up that clinic, that group clinic. How is this going to affect, I believe, did we set that up specifically with Front Path, or is that...
And we will be able to continue with the clinic, even though we will be moving our main body of the health insurance over to United Healthcare.
Okay, and I just want to make sure that, because I know that there's some significant cost savings in the long run on that, so...
Right, right. But that's a separate agreement on itself.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to double check on that. Thank you.
Sure, thanks.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Okay, Mr. Matusak.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Maturney.
Yes.
Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor Mackin, that is all for me.
Thank you very much, Jim, and we want to wish you well at your new job, and we want to thank you on behalf of the city of Perrysburg and all the council members for your service and hard work on behalf of the community.
I appreciate that, hon.
Did I piggyback on that briefly? The other thing that you should observe is, Jim, I've been on finance with you for four years now, maybe longer, but if you attend any of those meetings, you can really rest assured, your money's in good control here. I mean, with Jim's leadership and Dave, and then Bridget backstops both of them, so he's excelled a lot of areas, but we'll really miss him in that area, where he did an exemplary job of really keeping out an eye for the city's monies, and his focus was almost always on the taxpayer. That's always good to remember.
Although I asked a lot of questions, Bridget always had the right answers, so we're in good shape whether I ask them or not.
No.
She's...
We'll see.
And Mr. Krebs as well.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Moving now on Service Committee.
Service Committee met December 10th. The first item of business we talked about was appointment to the Tree Commission. We recommended that Susan Roland Miller be approved. We discussed fall tree planting and legislation, piece of legislation entering a contract with North Branch Nursery for the 2020 fall planning. We discussed erosion control at Three Pond Meadow Park and what it would take to stabilize a bank. Fire Station 38 improvements, right now, the way it is in the old fire station, the new fire station is set up where you have zones for decontamination of that type. The old one does not have that, so this would improve that and place for the, and separated. And that piece of legislation actually has to do with, I believe, the consultant fees, am I right?
For the...
Fire station?
Design.
Yeah. And we talked about the, what, State Route 25 and West South Boundary Intersection Approval, and entered into a contract with Tetra Tech for the Construction and Engineering Administration of that, and the RPR Service for State Route 25 and West South Boundary Inspection and Intersection Improvements. And for those of you who don't know this, TMA COC funding is involved in this, and Tetra Tech was chosen from a list of qualified engineering firms. All those will be coming into legislation in a few minutes. And then the other business was, Mr. Smith stated he was going to be attending a Transportation Improvement District Meeting scheduled for the following day and report back to committee. Our next meeting is Wednesday, January 27, 2021, at 5:30. Okay. First piece of legislation, and I'm not going to bundle them, because they're all kind of different in and of themselves.
Okay.
So, the first piece of legislation I would like to introduce is Resolution 60-2020, and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only and to dispense with the second and third readings. And...
Second.
Roll call.
I didn't know if you were doing...
I forgot, it's supposed to be, do I do the emergency now?
No, no, yeah.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Roll call on introduction. Okay, Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Maturney.
Yes.
Mr. Matusak.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Okay, Resolution Number 60, 2020, a resolution authorizing an agreement with North Branch Nursery Incorporated not to exceed $65,091 for the 2020 fall tree planting and declaring an emergency.
I move that Resolution 60-2020 be passed as an emergency measure.
I have discussion.
Oh, we need a second.
A second. Discussion.
Yeah, yes, I have discussion. When I was looking through this, looking through the packet, I was wondering, I see where we have North Branch Nursery, and then it says that there were two attached to this legislation. I only saw one, which was North Branch for the bids. And the next question I have is, why is this an emergency to plant trees when it says it's for fall of 2020, and we're in December of 2020? This is winter.
Wait, there is a second bid that was submitted that was significantly higher that we provided to the committee, but did not include in this in an effort to save some paper. And the reason that we declared it as an emergency is there is a sharp, a sharp window when you can plant trees, and we are in that window right now. What we call fall tree planting is really kind of winter tree planting, and so if it's not declared as an emergency and we can't do it for 30 days, we won't be able to plant.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Okay, Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Matusak.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Maturney.
Yes.
Ms. Born.
Yes.
I would like to introduce the Resolution 61-2020, and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only and to dispense with the second and third reading.
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Maturney.
Yes.
Mr. Matusak.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Resolution Number 61, 2020, a resolution authorizing an agreement with G6 Infrastructure LLC not to exceed $74,960 for bank stabilization and erosion control at Three Meadows Large Pond.
Oh, sorry. I move that Resolution 61-2020 be passed.
Second.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Why is ODOT doing this work for the pond?
Why are they not?
What, no, why is ODOT doing the work for the pond?
I don't see it in here.
The firm that will be completing the work is G6 Infrastructure. What you see in your materials is references to ODOT specifications that we are following to complete the work. ODOT will not be performing this work or have any hand in the work.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Maturney.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Mr. Matusak.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Okay, I would like to introduce Resolution 62-2020, and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only and to dispense with the second and third reading.
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Maturney.
Yes.
Mr. Matusak.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Resolution Number 62, 2020, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Munger and Munger Associates Incorporated not to exceed 12% of the total cost of construction for construction documents for fire station renovations at Fire Station Number 38, located at 140 West Indiana Avenue, and declaring an emergency.
I move that Resolution 62-2020 be passed as an emergency measure.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, I have a question. Who are the reviewers here? It mentions there were reviewers, and I'd like to be interested to see a bid from Bergman, because I didn't see that listed, simply because I didn't see it listed. I only saw Munger and Munger.
Yes, we certainly have a copy of the Bergman proposal that we provided to council. The reviewers included our Service Director, it included our Utilities Deputy Director, our Planning and Zoning Director, and Mr. Epp.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Matusak.
Yes.
Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Ms. Maturney.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Thank you.
I would like to introduce Resolution 63-2020, and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only and to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Maturney.
Yes.
Mr. Matusak.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Resolution Number 63, 2020, authorizing an agreement with Tetra Tech for Construction Engineering and Administration and RPR Services for the State Route 25 and West South Boundary Intersection Improvement, ODOT PID Number 104496, ODOT project name, when I'm going to say it, in an amount not to exceed $49,900.
I move that Resolution, Resolution 63-2020 be passed.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have a question on this one. Where are the bids? I didn't see any bids listed. I just saw Tetra Tech. And who are the pre-qualified, as it's mentioned, engineering list?
We have a list of pre-qualified engineers and other qualified individuals, depending upon what the project is, and anything that is under $50,000 by law, we are permitted to pick from that list, any individual that, any business that we believe is appropriate for the construction project. So in this case, this was under $50,000. They were on the pre-qualified list, so we chose Tetra Tech.
Okay, I'd like to see the list of them, if possible.
Absolutely, absolutely. And it's for, there's multiple categories for which people submit to us their qualifications, so when you see it, you'll see that some businesses qualify for two or three things, some qualify for four things, some qualify for one.
Yep.
I could include that in my email to council along with the Bergman proposal.
Isn't that an ODOT maintained list?
That is not.
Okay.
So if you are using ODOT funds for the actual design, you have to use their pre-qualified firms. We, every two years, go out and solicit qualifications in a variety of topics, whether it be architecture, landscaping, roadway, water, sewer, wastewater, stormwater, and we pre-qualify our own list for services that are less than $50,000.
Do we use, do we even look at the ODOT list for that?
The ODOT list, I have looked at it on site, on their website, and it's not specific to Wood County.
Yeah, that's true.
It includes...
You're excellent.
So it's very hard to slice and dice. If we were using ODOT grant funding for this project, we would have had to go through their process of selection to select... their process of selection to select off their pre-qualified list.
The reason why I was asking is because I was going to point out that that's, anybody, the public has access to that list, you know, if you want to look it up yourself. That's what I was trying to get at, in my roundabout way.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Born.
Yes.
Ms. Materni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Matusak.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Or is that the end of your report?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, that is it.
Thanks, Jane.
Next meeting is January 2021.
Great.
I said it earlier.
Yeah, that's right.
Hopefully everybody caught it.
Safety Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. Safety Committee has not met, and we have canceled the December meeting due to lack of legislation. So our next committee meeting will be Tuesday, January 26, at 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
That would be, conclude my report.
Thank you. Recreation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no report, but I would like to say there was communication regarding an email among the Pratt Group and Mr. Todd France that went out in the last couple of days regarding a crosswalk between Rivercrest Park and Rotary Park, and I think it's a nice idea to be considered, and it sounds like there might be a possibility of that, so thanks in advance if that does happen. Thank you. Oh, and our next meeting will be the second Tuesday in January.
All right, thank you. Planning and Zoning Committee.
No report, Your Honor. We meet on January 13, 2021, at 5:30 PM. I do have the keeping of hens ordinances, so I'll go ahead and introduce ordinances 23 and 24, 2020, and move that the rules be suspended to allow for their reading by number and title only.
Second. Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Materni.
Yes.
Mr. Matusak.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
Okay, Ordinance Number 23, 2020, amending codified ordinance section 1215.02, section 180 of the City of Perrysburg zoning code to allow for keeping of hens within the city of Perrysburg. Sorry, Tim, did you introduce 24 also? Okay, thank you. Moving on, Ordinance 24, 2020, amending codified ordinance section 1225.08 of the City of Perrysburg zoning code to allow for the keeping of hens within the city of Perrysburg.
Then I would like to move that ordinances 23 and 24, 2020, be passed.
Second. Discussion.
I do have one question.
Yes.
Sorry, Councilwoman Born.
Sure.
I know that in the previous legislation, the way it's currently listed in the code, it is permitted in agriculture and special approval use in R1. Is there a reason to not have it be a special approval use in all those other districts? And I'm going to follow that up with another question with, we've had some residents come out and express some concerns about their neighbors bringing this onto the lot. I know that the committee had some long discussions on this, and I was just kind of curious to what the final resolution was to that and how the Planning and Zoning Department will receive notice of someone who is raising hens in their backyard.
Well, as far as enforcement, if, it'd be like any other zoning issue, I suppose. If someone felt a neighbor or anyone was keeping hens in a manner that's inconsistent with the ordinance, they'd call the Planning and Zoning Department, they'd go check into it. And the reason we felt comfortable allowing it in those zoning districts is that there is a minimum lot size of 10,890 square feet. So we felt if you've got that big a lot, you can't have no more than six hens, and you've got the coops and runs are all, you know, dimensions are established. We felt that it could adequately exist, and if there was a problem that the code wasn't being followed, then, you know, we'd enforce it like any other zoning issue. And we noted we haven't had much in the way of any negative experience with the kind of trial run we've been through, and I think even at the committee, we talked about the fact that, you know, lessons learned, it's a new adventure. If something, you know, happens where we see it's a problem, then, you know, that's the type of legislation you may need to go back and revisit if you, you know, if you encounter something that was unexpected, but...
I agree that there hasn't been any issues with the grant friendly portion. That's one of the reasons we went to that step to see if there was going to be problems about going to the step we're at now. And I guess the question I have is, I know some of our districts are not necessarily up to the code with the actual lot size itself. Is that, are all the, like, was it R3 is the smallest one at the 10,000? Are all the lots in the R3 district that's specific size, or is this going to be?
It's...
It has to meet that minimum lot size.
It crosses over, and that's not an arbitrary lot size. So that's designed to be the original lot sizes of the original plat, which is roughly a quarter of an acre lot. It also allows for the setbacks to occur that we discussed. And I know the gentleman that spoke against allowing hens, his name's slipping me, and I'm not going to take the time to look it up tonight, but I don't, I believe he was R3 or R4 and would not have qualified till, his neighbors wouldn't qualify for hens. And certainly this ordinance limits the number of hens that he had previously experienced. I think he said 20-some hens at a neighbor's house. This limits it to six. So we tried to be cognizant of those concerns and address it with this ordinance.
And I recall the previous ordinance as well, that there was to be a review of the coops. Is that not going to be the case in this one or by the Planning and Zoning Department? Am I, or am I just overthinking it?
No, I mean, there won't be, they won't, it's not a licensed activity anymore, so it would be an enforcement issue like any other. But no, I mean, we weren't, we didn't have a mechanism, and I don't believe the administration probably has the manpower, you know, to go out and inspect, you know, annually expect to coop to make sure it's not too large. But again, if you ever had an issue, I assume our folks could pretty easily visually observe without even entering the property to see if it looked like there was a size issue.
Okay. I just, I know there's a lot of conversation, I'm thinking back to being actively involved with this about three years ago, give or take a year. And for some reason, I recall that there was some licensure requirement for that, or is that not, so you're saying that's no longer the case at this point?
That would no longer be the case.
Understood.
Yeah. That was on the interim step, Jonathan, where in the interim period, you know, if you had a hen, you were grandfathered to keep the existing hen, and you had, well, we chipped them, right? We had them chipped, and you had to have a license and pay a fee every year, and that would no longer be the case.
So there's no more fee or anything else associated?
No, no.
I would like to add that I think that it's great about, for sustainability, and you talk about a progressive community, which I think we are trying to be, and this is a step forward toward that.
Yeah, great.
Any other discussion?
No, but I'll say that I was one of the people initially who had some apprehensiveness to this when this first passed the first time. Kind of one of the reasons I brought the questions I asked today. But I will say that it's, I think that we have not seen any major issues here over the last couple of years, and so I think this is the right next step.
I'd like to just make a quick comment. You can almost say that those areas where it's zoned will be, harking back to the historic roots of the development of that size of the lots because they were started out as a gentleman farming lot in Perrysburg, quote unquote, according to the article.
Yeah, I know we took a lot of time on this at committee, and we heard the concerns, and this was here first, so I think I'd be remiss not to say thanks to Mark Weber, who really got the ball rolling on this and this update. So before we vote on it, I wanted to say that.
I'd also like to thank Krista Kiesling, who fought that for, I forget how many days she talked about. I attended the meetings. Was it just 400 and some days or something like that? Okay, I'd like to thank Krista Kiesling because I know she was the generator and the leader, so...
Any other discussion? If not, roll call.
Okay, roll call. Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Mr. Matusak.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Born.
Yes.
Ms. Materni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
Thank you.
Nothing further.
Thank you. Public Utilities Committee.
Personnel.
Oh, sorry.
I mean, if you just want to skip by me.
I usually skip public utilities, but personnel?
We have not met, and I do believe we are going to cancel our meeting that's scheduled for the 22nd, and move that date. So if I can talk to my fellow committee members, I know we want to consider the engineer position again at a committee level and hopefully present it to council on the 5th. Is that my understanding, Kate and Bridgette?
When we talk about moving this personnel committee meeting to early January to then go to council in January, on the 19th?
On the 19th is what we're shooting for. So if I could get a date in January, because our...
You have Wednesday the 6th, Thursday the 7th, Monday the 4th are all available Tuesday the 5th in City Council.
Any of those dates work?
Uh...
I think it's just Tim and I at this point, right?
Need the calendar.
Oh, yeah. No, no, I'm good. 6th and 7th are fine.
Okay.
Those are after council, though.
Yeah, we're just trying to meet before the 19th.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
I didn't hear the dates right. 6th and 7th are Wednesday and a Thursday.
Yeah, 4th, 6th, and 7th, so Monday, Wednesday, Thursday.
That's fine.
Which would you prefer, Tim? All of them, wait for me.
Thursday if...
Thursday the 7th, so we'll meet at Thursday the 7th at 5:30.
Okay.
And then I have no other update, but I do have a piece of legislation. So I would like to introduce for its second reading, Ordinance 25, 2020, a move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only.
Second. Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Materni.
Yes.
Mr. Matusak.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
Ordinance Number 25, 2020, an ordinance amending the city's administrative code, Title 4, Chapter 20, by adding Rule 8 to subsection 220.05, creating a code of conduct for City Council.
I have nothing further.
Thank you. Public Utility.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate being moved up unexpectedly in the meeting to the end again.
I forget you, you complain. I'm happy you complained.
So with that being said, we did have a Public Utilities Committee meeting on December 10th. It was called at 6:00 PM by Chairman Jonathan Smith. Committee members present were Jan Materni, Jonathan Smith, and Barry Van Hoozen. Also present were Bridget Cabot, City Administrator, Kate Sandretto, Law Director, Alice Gossi, Director of Public Utilities, and Matt Choma, Director, excuse me, Deputy Director of Public Utilities. The first item on the agenda was tabled, as there's still some information being gathered. We had another conversation regarding the sewer credit tabulation for year-to-date, which the utility director has the ability to approve as well, and the total credits granted was $7,264.66 during 2020. Next item was authorized purchase of the sewer system telemetry equipment. You may notice in this, after this discussion, that this item is not on the agenda. It has been temporarily tabled as some information came up that they want to look into a little bit more deeply. On this, Ms. Gossi requested approval of the contract with Mission Communications in the amount of $32,177 for telemetry equipment for the 11th sanitary sewer lift stations. She explained that this equipment will send an alarm to the on-call person if there is an electrical malfunction or high-water issue that needs to be addressed. If these issues are not resolved in an timely manner, it could result in a sewer backup. So Ms. Gossi said that one of the other quotes that was received was in the amount of $160,000. Both Ms. Gossi and Mr. Choma used this company at previous places of employment and had no issues with them. Ms. Materni asked for the battery backup for the system, and Ms. Gossi said they have portable generators. The committee agreed 3O to recommend approval of the purchase, but that's going to be tabled up until possibly the next council meeting. Legislation regarding Section 1060.06B, Rule 65, the non-sufficient fund fee was discussed. Ms. Sandretto stated that at a previous meeting, the committee discussed the return check fee. The code language currently reads that the fee is $20 for city customers and $30 for outside-city customers. The current amount charged to the city for returned items is $23. Ms. Sandretto presented the committee with two options. The first would be to repeal the language and handle it with administrative policy. The second option is to amend the language to read that the fee is equivalent to what the city pays the bank. She recommended it not be changed to a certain amount because that amount can vary and change. The committee agreed 3O to go with the second option, which is going to put, to amend the language to read the fee is equivalent to what the city pays the bank. And the next item on the agenda is a legislation to revise our homeowner grants. Mr. Smith stated the committee has discussed this grant program that encourages homeowners to remove clean water connections from the sanitary sewer system. Ms. Sandretto stated that the current language allows the city to reimburse homeowners 2/3 of the construction cost up to $6,000 maximum. Because the cost of the construction has increased, and to encourage more participation in the program, the administration is recommending the amounts be changed to allow for reimbursements of 80% of the construction cost up to $12,000. Mr. Smith had asked about the fines with the EPA for the overflows that the city would pay. These fines are discretionary, according to Ms. Gossi, and they can be up to $25,000 per day for a violation. Mr. Smith said that he's okay with the change to avoid costs and help with the EPA permit in the future. Mr. Van Hoozen said that he has no problem with the change, and he wishes that we could find some way to encourage homeowners to participate. There was some discussion regarding getting the information out, and the administration is looking into better communicating that to our residents, and the committee agreed 3O to recommend approval of the increased amount for the homeowner grants program. Next item on the agenda is the Fort Meigs ditch design follow-up. Mr. Smith said that I had sent the design of the ditch to the residents in the area and that he has not received any comments from them as of this meeting on December 10th. Since this time, I have received a few questions, and I forward that over to Ms. Gossi to hopefully help answer. The committee discussed options regarding a sidewalk or multi-use path and what type of a buffer is required on a road with no curbs. Ms. Cabot said that the administration will check with the consultant to see if the buffer Ms. Cabot said that the administration will check with the consultant to see if the buffer requirement is a federal regulation. The committee reviewed the options of no sidewalk, a five-foot wide sidewalk, and an eight wood, uh, excuse me, an eight-foot wide multi-use path. Uh, Mr. Van Hoozen said it is a heavily-used sidewalk and he wondered how not installing a sidewalk is an option. Ms. Cabot said that it would have to be put on the other side of the road. She stated that she believes several properties on the east side of the road go to the edge of the road or to the center of the road. There are other questions about how to put in a sidewalk without affecting the drainage. Mr. Van Hoozen said that it sounds like it would be a major project to put it on the east side of the road, so really the only options are a five-foot sidewalk or an eight-foot multi-use path. Mr. Smith added that he thinks there are some right-of-way issues on the east side. Uh, he noted that, uh, when, uh, I, when he runs, there is pooling of water issue on the sidewalk north of ditch, so he believes whenever it is decided issue to continue down all along Fort Meigs Road. Ms. Materni stated that, uh, she said in one of the recent land use plan meetings, and people want more parks and multi-use paths connecting the city. Mr. Smith agreed that there is a lot of demand for it. Ms. Sandretto clarified that the committee wants to know if a five-foot buffer on an uncurved street is a recommendation or regulation. Mr. Smith said that his recommendation would be an eight-foot multi-use path with a two-foot buffer be installed depending on the rules with the buffer and how it would impact the west side of the ditch. He said that this can be discussed at the next council meeting and, uh, I believe we will bring this up for discussion here after we go through our ordinances. And there would be no further business adjourned at 6:47 PM. And with that being said, I do have two ordinances to introduce here. If it's okay with everyone, I can put them together or I can separate them if anybody would like to separate them.
Could you please separate them, please?
Not a problem. Alright, so first I would like to introduce Ordinance 372020, a move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only in dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Boren.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Materni.
Yes.
Mr. Matusak.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
Ordinance number 372020, amending Rule 65 of the codified ordinance Section 1060.06B of the City of Perrysburg Streets Utilities and Public Services Code, section previously enacted by Ordinance number 462012 and passed on March 6, 2012.
Alright, I move that Ordinance 372020 be passed.
My second.
Discussion.
I just think it's fair. Needs to be done.
Roll call.
Okay, Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Matusak.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Boren.
Yes.
Ms. Materni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
Alright, I would like to introduce Ordinance 382020, a move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only in dispense with the second and third reading.
My second.
Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Boren.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Materni.
Yes.
Mr. Matusak.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
Ordinance number 382020, amending Ordinance 64-2018 and Ordinance 121-1993, which established a grant program to assist homeowners in removing clean water connections from the sanitary sewer system.
Alright, I move that Ordinance 382020 be passed.
My second.
Discussion.
Can I throw in one quick question? Jonathan, the minutes say, and Alice is here, it's really something she said. It, they say that a clean, uh, Ella said that a clean water connection to the sanitary sewer is illegal and that resolving these connections is voluntary at this point, but in the future it may become mandatory. I, I was just confused, if it's illegal, how, how is it voluntary?
So, uh, and I know Ms. Gossi could probably talk to us a little, uh, more, we did have, that was mentioned at the end of the, uh, the, uh, committee meeting, but what that meant, uh, is that it's very difficult for the city to enforce it anyways, you'd have to know where these connections are. Um, right now, with the connections that are, it's basically some pumps are taking the, the rainwater, pushing it right to the sanitary sewer. Uh, where that sits right now is that's contributing to our overflow issues and we want to try to encourage as much as possible. Uh, the big question that I have, and I think that we want to try to encourage as a voluntary and versus mandatory, because I don't know how you'd be able to enforce it mandatorily.
Okay, that, that explains it then. I, I just got confused, I thought mandatory and most laws I know of, you, you gotta follow them, but I get what you're saying.
The only way to be able to do it is to know where the connections are or to go into someone's home and, and test it. And you can't, that's a whole nother constitutional issue I don't want to go down.
I think what you're doing with the program is, is a great idea. I, I just got confused on that point.
I want to say there was only just a handful of uses of this program this last year. And so it's one of the reasons why we're bringing this here and this conversation we had brought up a couple of months ago is to try to increase utilization so we can encourage a larger use of the, um, uh, of the grant in order to get rid of these connections, and one of the suggestions that we had was finding ways to get this out to plumbing companies, uh, so that way they can be the ones to, to push this in the areas that we know are, um, more likely to have these type of connections. If, if you're a business and you know you have a good chance of getting 80% of your, your pay, you're gonna jump on that.
Just to add, it's been that way for long. I, I administered this for years and it was always a trickle, it was three or four a year. And most of the folks who fall into this category are in the old square or mile block part of the city.
I have a question. How are we, how have we, how have we been, how has this been publicized?
It's been on our website as well as our social media. Shannon Solz has put it on our social media.
But how about for others that, I'm just thinking of others who may or may not have social media or have a computer, how has it been publicized?
Um, Ms. Patsy, I don't think we've, uh, we have them in the, in the journal, or if we put them in the actual utility bills. We have not, but we could do that if we chose to help.
And the next question I have is, is why are we doubling from 6,000 to 12,000?
To encourage use. We're, we're trying to get, to cover costs because costs have increased since this grant was created. And we're trying to encourage use, and since we have such so limited, such a limited number of individuals who have taken advantage of it so far, we're hoping that if the amount increases, that will encourage more use.
But this is grant money, right? It's grant money that's being used?
It's money, we're, 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 we're trying to get people to fix what it is a bit.
Utilizing the sewer funds.
Yeah. There's, there's what, 200,000 sitting there?
Something like that.
Alice is shaking her head yes, so 200,000 dollars that it's set aside in, for these grants that are not being utilized. And we'd like to try to do that in hopes that we can reduce even the cost of some of the sewer projects we have to do to make up for that extra in, excess, uh, water that's coming into the system that shouldn't be. Any other discussion? If not, roll call.
Okay, Mr. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
And Mr. Smith.
Yes.
And Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Matusak.
Yes.
Ms. Materni.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Boren.
I'm gonna say no, because we need to have this read three times and this is, and I'm wondering why this is an emergency.
It's, alright, tell them it's not an emergency, we were just waiting this three weeks, we go and go back in 30 days to see your word.
Okay. Alright, so there is no further items for, uh, the Public Utilities and our next scheduled meeting is January 27th at 6:30 PM. And I think Mr. Matusak would like to say something other business.
Well, we didn't have discussion regarding the...
Oh, yes, I, I apologize. Um, I meant to have the discussion on the sidewalk and I've gotten to all the other discussion, I, it slipped my mind. So, uh, for the Fort Meigs ditch, I apologize. Um, we had a, a presentation that was made to us and I'm hoping Ms. Gossi can possibly come up here and, uh, uh, catch everyone else up on council on this who have not been sitting on the committee. Uh, but there was a recommendation that came to us from our, um, from a, uh, the, uh, group that we had contracted to survey the ditch to look and see what we can do to, uh, to help with the stabilization of the ditch with, alongside the road, as well as the sidewalk. If anybody's walked that sidewalk, you can see how it's starting to, to bow and, and bends, and that there was some issues with the actual size of the slope. A couple of things they came back with was actually increasing, um, or raising the ditch level, uh, to give it the proper slope. And, uh, one of the, the, the parts of this was regarding the sidewalk on there and what size sidewalk we have to have. So I'm hoping that we can have, uh, some information or some discussion on this and I, I know it's a really quick synopsis of it, but I'm looking at both Bridget and Alice if you can come up and potentially fill in the rest of the council.
Uh, well, unfortunately, we've not received any word back from our consultants after we posed the series of questions last week. So we're still waiting on that information. And, and essentially, and we'll use these carpet squares as a visual, uh, according to the current design drawings, uh, proposed design drawings from CT Consultants, uh, you can have a eight-foot multi-use path, or we think we can have an eight-foot multi-use path with a, a, a five-foot buffer on one side, uh, the street side, the path, and then a two-foot buffer on the ditch bank side. So what we're trying to figure out is can we have a two-foot buffer on the roadside if we have the appropriate barricade, have the pathway, and then have a two-foot buffer on the ditch side?
Uh, a five-foot buff, buffer on the ditch side?
Was it a?
Yeah.
Five-foot buffer on the ditch side, Ms. Gossi?
I thought that's what I understood.
She's pulling it up.
Okay.
Um, or, or conversely, having a, a five-foot standard sidewalk, which is our standards today, having the separation. So, um, to put into perspective, two-to-one slope would mean, uh, that two-foot of run for one foot, in this case, not rise, but drop. So if you had a two-foot buffer on the ditch bank side, is that a good safety factor, which is essentially the width of one of these carpet squares, will be two feet for the top of the ditch bank? Or does it need to be five-foot? And if, if it needs to be five-foot, is that a state regulation, a federal regulation, or is that a suggestion? So we're trying to figure out from the consultants what are hard and fast rules that we have to live by versus their recommendations and suggestions. Uh, but Mr. Smith has been advocating for a wider than five-foot, um, sidewalk. It can't be a 10-foot multi-use path because there's simply not enough room. Um, this could cause additional work on the west side of the bank, which could impact other vegetation. So we're finding out all these answers to understand, uh, the pros of having a wider pathway for pedestrians and bicyclists versus any, uh, negative impacts that could take place uh, to the homeowners on the opposite side, or just safety factors in and of itself. To make sure that we have a safe, uh, walkway, whether it's five-foot or eight-foot for our residents and guests.
And I, and I guess, so we, you found out the question, what is going to affect the, are they talking about even having a five-foot sidewalk affecting that west side of that bank?
Correct.
That's one of the things that we were unclear of as well.
Because there's some corrections to, um, the ditch bank that if not taking place on the east side, would have to take place on the west side, which then could impact, uh, the vegetation over there, as well as we're determining how much right-of-way is on the west side of the ditch, ditch bank, uh, at these pinch points, we'll call it, to make sure that we don't actually have to go in and request to purchase that right-of-way in order to make these modifications. And we're also determining, is it right-of-way or is it easement, because a utility easement has, uh, uh, very limited abilities to go outside of what that easement purpose was for. If it's an easement and it says it's clearly for maintaining the ditch, then we would not be able to use that property for a multi-use path.
Ms. Cabot, has anybody inquired from the residents who live on Fort Meigs Road how they feel about it and what they would like to have?
Uh, Mr. Mr. Smith has been keeping in contact with many of the residents over in that neighborhood and in fact has recently received some questions, I think that he forwarded on to Ms. Gossi, who is in the process, uh, uh, this evening and tomorrow, in gathering that information from our consultants.
So we're trying to keep them all in the loop this whole time?
I, I just think that stretch of land really, I, I know I'm in total agreement, I think, with Jonathan on this one, a multi-use path is wide as we can make it and make it safe there just makes a ton of sense. Uh, as far as mileage on our multi-use paths, I know it connects quite a few of them.
So what, it started to interrupt you, Congressman Coolman, but, um, I, just to kind of elaborate a little bit more on that is this path would essentially connect the path that ends over at, um, Fort Meigs, or at least give us to, to that point where we can connect the, the multi-use path that ends at Fort Meigs. Uh, and then they had that conversation, can we pick it up somewhere in River Crest, which will take a path all the way to Alpern Intermedia?
Yeah, and to, I, I guess, Route 25 in Royston.
Yeah.
So it's, makes a lot of sense, it adds a lot of mileage to our multi-use paths for people that enjoy those.
Just gonna make sure it works.
Yep.
Bridget, you had mentioned pinch points, do we have at least a minimum of 15 feet, the whole stretch right now?
Um, I will defer to Ms. Gossi on that because I do believe the consultants referenced a couple, uh, couple of points in between, I think it was Echo Junction and, uh, I think Sutton Place perhaps, that were narrower uh, than other locations, and also that might be where the ditch was kind of meandering off course because of, um, not, not necessarily blockage, because of sedimentation buildup that was taking a new pathway.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, um, in answer to your question, there are two pinch points where a five-foot sidewalk would be allowable where, where the sidewalk is now. But this particular, um, the cross-sections they looked at and the pinch points did not address an eight-foot. And those are the questions we've posed since last Thursday, we've posed to the consultant.
And Ms. Gossi, what is the, the recommended, I'll call it, recommended buffers on either side of a sidewalk and a multi-use path?
Okay, for sidewalk, between a road and an uncurved walk is a five-foot minimum buffer for a five-foot sidewalk. Between the road and the walk curved, which is not applied here. Um, and then between the ditch and the walk, two-foot minimum buffer. And then the safety barriers between the road and the walk, none is required, but you'd still need to comply with the buffer requirements above. Between the ditch and the walk, no safety barriers are required. And then in the case of a, um, multi-use path, the required buffer between the road and the path is minimum five feet between the edge of a paved shoulder and the path. Between the ditch and the path, a safety rail is needed where the buffer width is less than five feet and the slope is, uh, two, uh, two-to-one or steeper, where the drop is greater than four feet. And then safety barrier options between the road and the path, the barrier need not be crash-worthy, uh, or be 42 inches high. Um, but you do have to create a visual separation between the road and the path, such as aluminum or steel railing, wood railing. Then between the ditch and the path, dense shrubbery, railing or fencing. And all of these examples, um, have been used at various places in Perrysburg.
Ms. Gossi, I have a question for you. I recall that, this is long before I was on council, but I think it was probably three or four years ago, the trees were cut down and several of the residents were unhappy regarding that, there were several trees. Could trees be, to your mentioning about shrubbery, could trees be planted into that area to help soak up the water that they got into their, that got into their residents' homes?
Uh, trees could be planted, but, um, until they were, um, high enough and dense enough, really, this specifies dense shrubbery because it's a visual separation.
And you also have to be able to maintain access to that ditch for ongoing maintenance purposes.
Alice, what, were you, what were you reading from? Are those requirements or recommendations and, and who, who's the source?
These are requirements, they're listed as requirements and they're from the Federal Highway, um, Manual.
Okay.
So they're US, um, Department of Transportation.
Gotcha.
Which I was trying to look up.
Ms. Gossi, you had said a couple of things about the, the buffer between the street and the path, if there's a path.
But is that, I think you said it needed to be five-feet buffer.
Is that correct?
Especially if there's a five-foot buffer between an uncurved road and that, and a little side.
But then you also said something about another five-feet, I thought maybe you were referring to five-feet tall? Could it be like a, what I'm envisioning is like the guardrails that I see when I'm in the national parks, they're made out of 10 by 10 treated wood. And they're, you almost don't notice them because they blend in with the surroundings, but they're, they're there, they serve a purpose, they divide it, they stop cars, they aren't really for pedestrians, because the other side of these rails is usually a cliff. But, you know, they're two, two-and-a-half feet tall, but they're made of natural materials. I don't know if that's something that would be acceptable in a setting like that?
Um, um, Counselor Matusak, um, this is not my knowledge, I'm reading from the consultant's, uh, knowledge, and that's kind of outside of my...
But I, but I heard, did I hear you say it had to be five-feet tall, though, that's right?
No, it was between the road and the path, five-foot separation, then between the path and the ditch.
Got that.
Um, if it's, a safety rail is needed if the buffer is less than five-foot of width.
So it doesn't speak to the height?
Forty-two inches, I thought she said.
I thought she said it doesn't, it doesn't have to be forty-two inches.
Between the road and the path, the barrier need not be crash-worthy or need not be 42 inches high.
Right.
Which that doesn't really tell us anything.
Right.
So it can't be dense shrubbery, I think.
I can't, I can't answer your question about that, FYI. Um, the material you use has to be approved by federal, uh, the federal.
Highway Manual.
Highway, because, um, of the liabilities, using certain issue, using certain materials or certain design methodology versus others. A good example is the new guardrail ends that are boxed compared to the, uh, because of all the lawsuits, that, that wasn't the safest. Um, anything that's, any type of material or fencing that's been approved by the feds can be used.
If this isn't a federal highway, this is...
It doesn't matter, they set the standards.
Is it just NHTSA?
And, yeah, NHTSA, and for you to va- variate, um, go away from those standards, uh, you're asking for, uh, liability because all that has been tested and that's what they say. Um, and each state can take that and have their own standards, they're slightly stricter, and ODOT has done that. Um, uh, it's, it's, it's materials that they've tested and they know are, are good, that's why they're telling you, you have to do it this way. Um, a good example is signs, you would think nothing of the signs, but signs have been designed up the, to, uh, be able to withstand certain.
Any other questions?
I guess I would just advocate for most types of guardrails, I think, so they're actually...
I mean, they can be simple handrails, as long as it's NHTSA-approved.
I, I had a follow-up question, it, I mean, I, I, I agree that an eight-foot multi-use path...
Sorry, I can't hear Ms. McCarthy.
I, the, an eight-foot multi-use path, I think, would be great. But that, if I'm reading this correctly and if I'm hearing this correctly, in some places, that would... this correctly, and if I'm hearing this correctly, in some places, that would only leave a two-foot buffer between the path and the road. And if I heard Alice correctly, you can't do that.
We've done it in some parts of the city already. If you go over the diversion diamond, but it's curved, the Fort Meigs Road isn't curved, so that's why we need to get some further questions.
Okay.
Actually, if you go on Echo Junction, coming to 25 heading west, there's not even a barricade on that. It's a sidewalk right along the road with no rail.
Down on Fort Meigs, there's barriers up, where it's like right alongside the road.
On Fort Meigs, on the east side, just past, north of Echo Junction, there's sidewalk on the side that has railing on there as well.
Okay.
So there's, there's spots in our city that we've done it.
Yeah.
We just need to see what can we, can we put it up there, and can, can we put a barricade?
And that's a curb, isn't it, curb too?
Those are all curved, but we need to see, should we, are we allowed to do that? Can we curve it? Can it not be curved with a barricade? What are we allowed to do?
Okay, so you.
Needless to say, we're not taking any action today.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there's a lot of questions we don't know the answer to, but.
We're hoping to have the answers by today, and to have that, but at least we can keep this in our mind here moving forward, because wherever direction we need to go, we need to help, I guess, we want to keep this as a council decision versus just a committee decision on the direction to give the administration, since the council's been involved with this from the very beginning.
I would say I think I'm going to be an advocate to get that multi-use, even if it costs some extra dollars, because I think long-term investment-wise, while we're working on this ditch, if we have to work a couple easements for choke points, things like that, I think long-term, it could be worth doing, so I will probably be an advocate for that.
Financially, you're exactly right. Look at all the money the Metro Park's bringing to Lucas County in a year. It's, it's what, over 3 million alone, they estimated? So let's get some of those dollars down here.
Any other discussion? If not, any other business to come forth as council?
I would like to say that I'm very sorry about Dave Krupp's loss of his mother, Betty.
Any other business? Any motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Hearing no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Everyone have a very happy holiday.